Good evening, I'd like to call the March 13th, 2025 North Hills School District Board of Education Legislative Meeting to order. I'd like to ask everybody to please rise for a moment of silence and salute to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. We're going to begin this evening with a performance from the North Hills Middle School Beginning Band and members of the eighth grade band. So I'll hand it over to Mr. Lucas Beaver and Mr. Tom Hartwell. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you so much for welcoming our middle school bands to the school board meetings. My name is Tom Hartwell, my colleague Lucas Beaver and I have the privilege of teaching our eighth grade, seventh grade, and beginning band students here at North Hills. Tonight we'd like to share a snapshot of what band looks like here at North Hills. We would love to share all of our students, but we simply can't fit. Currently, Mr. Beaver and I teach 250 students in our band classes. As we look forward to the upcoming school year, we anticipate welcoming 268 students into our classroom. Additionally, when we add in the sixth grade students that Mrs. Webster and Mr. Lucas, collectively, we will welcome 360 students into the middle school band. On my right, we have representatives from our beginning band. Six months ago, these students began their journey of learning instruments. Six months ago, they were just learning to put their instruments together. They've come so far in a short period of time. These wonderful students represent a snapshot of what some of, or how some of our middle school students do. On my left, we have representatives from our middle school wind ensemble. These incredibly hardworking and dedicated students represent a snapshot of where some of our students hang their musical journey into middle school as they prepare for what lies ahead in high school. At North Hills, we are truly fortunate that so many of our families and students participate in our band program. When we look at our neighboring districts, North Hills has a very large and healthy band program. Numbers are wonderful. However, numbers by themselves are empty without the constant pursuit for high achievement. Last year, our eighth grade band traveled to Hershey, Pennsylvania to participate in the Music in the Parks Festival. At this festival, our band received a rating of superior. This is the highest rating available to bands. Furthermore, our eighth grade band competed against bands from across the state as well as Delaware and New Jersey. Our eighth grade students were named the number one middle school band on the award. Finally, at last year's Music in the Parks Festival, our band, chorus, and orchestra students were honored with the coveted Siegfried of Oral Award. This award is presented to one school that demonstrates exemplary attitude, positive support, and outstanding personal behavior throughout the festival. I believe this proves that the ideals of pride, tradition, and excellence are more than just words that we say, they're rather ideals that our students strive to share with our schools and with the North Hills. So without further ado, our beginning band is going to share the old classic Nick Is. Oh goodness, what is it called? There we go. It is called Frere Show. All right, guys, are you ready? Here we go. Our next selection is variation of paint on Bongoff left sheet, but we like to call it Bongoff left.
The whole point of our program this evening was to showcase everything in our middle school bands. Like Mr. Hartwell mentioned, those were our beginners students and then about to perform is our middle school wind ensemble students. So for these beginners, most of them are in sixth grade, some of them are in seventh, but for most of them, next year, they will join our Band Seven course, which they'll be grouped in instrument groupings, and also join the other rising seventh graders that weren't beginners this year. So they'll be in a larger group next year. In eighth grade, we have the amazing opportunity to have music every day. So they'll have band every day in eighth grade. And these eighth graders are doing it in a section called Band Eight, and wind ensemble, which these students are part of that group. So they play more advanced music, but also play the music with the entire eighth grade band. In eighth grade, they also have the opportunity to join marching band, which is completely extracurricular, which most of these students are part of as well. So we're here to perform one song, one selection from our upcoming concert in April called JS Jig. So it's selections from the music of JS Bach put in a style of an Irish jig. So there's also a section in it where you can whistle along. So if you want to whistle along, I hope you enjoy.
I can't whistle. Thank you so much for coming this evening. We'll give the students just a minute to clear out, and then we'll carry on with the meeting. Parents or friends of band students or guardians, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but you may also leave if you like. You have our permission. Yeah. I sure know how to clear a room. Yeah, I know.
When they set up the room, they left it unplugged, I thought nobody wanted it plugged in because...
One, two, one, two.
Okay. We'll move on to board member comments. I'd like to announce that prior to this evening's meeting, the board met an executive session to discuss personnel and legal matters. Tonight's meeting is being recorded and broadcast live on North Hills School District's YouTube page. Images may also be posted on district social media. I'd like to give everybody a chance now to take out their phones and vote for Mr. Lovell for the award he's up for if they haven't yet today. He is, he has the opportunity to win $10,000, which he has promised to donate his portion of that back to the music department for a prize that Barry Manilow is giving at his concert that Sandy and I are going to, unrelated. So anyway, you've probably seen the posts on district social media, but you can vote every day. So I hope people are doing that. Do we have any other board member comments this evening?
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly mention, we heard from two of the middle school bands. The middle school jazz band played last night at the Allegheny Valley Jazz Festival, which featured bands from North Allegheny, Mars, crap, I forget what the other one was. And also, North Hills Middle School Jazz Band closed out the show, and I think that they were the largest and a little bit biased, but I think they were also some of the best too. So just wanted to note that and congratulate them.
Thank you. Any other board member comments this evening? Okay, Dr. Manarino, you are up for the public recognition for the 2025 National Technical Honor Society Awardees.
Thank you. I'm really proud to introduce nine of our really outstanding students here in North Hills who are also members of Beatty Technical School, and these students have been recognized as members of the National Technical Honor Society. They were inducted last week at a ceremony. So I'd like to call those students up, and if they can just join me as I call their name up here, and then I'll read some of the things about what Beatty Technical Honor Society is all about, and then our board members would like to shake your hands and congratulate you on this honor and accomplishment as well. So I'd like Anthony Brown, who is a member of advertising and design to come up here. Congratulations, Anthony. Kiera Claus, she is a member of sports medicine rehab and therapy. We have Mason Kowal, culinary arts. Josiah Mathis is robotics engineering technology. Kayden Popovich is carpentry and building construction. Brad Schaefer is carpentry and building construction. Elena Smith is health and nursing sciences. Shane Weichelman is carpentry and building construction. And Drake Witowski is carpentry and building construction. So I'd like to congratulate this group. To be a member of Beatty Technical Honor Society or National Technical Honor Society, you must exhibit seven attributes. You also have to be recommended by your faculty and voted into the organization, and those seven attributes are skill, scholarship, leadership, honesty, responsibility, service, and citizenship. And these honors and attributes make us proud to call you North Hills students, Beatty students, and now Beatty National Technical Honor Society students. So congratulations, and as I said, the board members would like to welcome you and shake your hand and congratulate you on your honor. Congratulations. Go right ahead. They're going to follow you.
Congratulations, everybody. I'd now like to introduce Mr. Joe Welch, one of our middle school social studies teachers, who's here to present a very special award this evening.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Mathis. It's a pleasure to be here to recognize one of our eighth graders on Team Hines right here at North Hills Middle School. I would like to ask Kale Schalkowski to come on up. Now, there's a great background story of why Kale and how Kale is going to be recognized both tonight and later on this spring in New York City. Kale was one of 24 students that opted into an enrichment activity in his social studies class that was part of what's called the Hamilton Education Program. And what that does, it asks students to come up with a creative piece that's based on primary source documents. And Kale submitted his piece that was called Paul Revere, which utilized the famous 1770 etching of Paul Revere describing the Boston Massacre. And there's a small poem underneath the Boston Massacre etching, and he put that together with some other sources, and he submitted this poem off to what's called the Gilderlammann Institute of American History. And we learned in February that Kale is one of 20 national winners and will receive a grand prize. That is a three-day, two-night, all-expense-paid trip to New York City to see the Broadway cast perform a matinee performance of the musical Hamilton. But wait, there's more. And then after the show, after the performance, Kale will be able to participate in a live Q and A with the Broadway cast. So please join me in congratulating eighth grader Kale Schalkowski. If I may, just add one more piece. This was the first year that we've had North Hills students participate in this, so pressure for future years. We are now one for one. And Kale, I made it through the whole way without making one Hamilton pun. Look at that. You're in the room where it happened.
I knew it. Kale, we'd love to come over, we'd love to shake your hand and congratulate you. Yeah, anybody who would like to stay is welcome to stay, but if you have some other place to be this evening, you're also welcome to carry on. I would like to introduce the student representatives next for their report, Grace and Faith.
Thank you. Vicki was leaving. I thought you were leaving.
Your table is in class, you're supposed to be in the front row, even if it clears out.
Everybody except the teachers' union president is allowed to leave.
Okay, so first off, we have our spring sports pep rally we had the other night on the new hilltop turf. So best of luck to all of our spring student athletes. We had baseball, softball, boys lacrosse and girls lacrosse, tennis, boys tennis, boys volleyball, and track and field. And then we had a winner of the International Science School Award. Rain Dickinson was selected to attend the prestigious International Science School, one of five students in the U.S. and 110 students worldwide. It's a two-week program to be held on July 6th through the 19th at the University of Sydney in Australia. Features some world-class lectures, hands-on activities, lab tours, and other events. So congratulations to her. Next, we had Scholastic Writing Awards. Sophomore Parker Pyle got the gold key, the competition's highest award. Senior Dylan Hogan was on honorable mention, and Faith McAtee was also an honorable mention for her short story. So congratulations, congratulations, Faith. And then we had a German National Honor Society induction. It was held on the 27th of February. Thirty-three students were inducted. That's the most ever in North Hills history, which is amazing. So then Spanish National Honor Society, which I was a part of in the back, 30 students were inducted, and it was also held on the 27th in here.
So Kicking It For Kids is the new community event in place of NH THON this year. It's going to be on Saturday, April 26th. So there's two parts. It's going to be Kicking It For Kids is the community hours like THON had. That's from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and that's on the hilltop turf field. And then the after-party and color run is just for high school students from 2:00 to 4:00. This will be, the color run is two laps around the middle school, and then they do kind of a color powder toss in the back. And the class officers and Mrs. Pedrowski are currently working on organizing that. So the color run is 10 tickets, which that's the high schoolers only, and that's on sale now. And then the complete details can be found on the activities and event site below. The SALT is a new student athlete leadership team. It's made up of 14 members. Sorry. It's the new student athlete leadership team. It's made up of 14 members. It's leaders and advocates for athletes on and off the field. Their mission is to use the do no harm philosophy to promote sportsmanship and positive athletic The FBLA Big Cookie Sale, so that was this week, Wednesday and Thursday, March 11th to 12th. And then I believe since they didn't sell them, they're also doing it tomorrow, the 13th. They had selections of Reese's Peanut Butter Cups, Triple Chocolate Chunk, Sugar Cookie, and M&M. So FBLA is going to states from April 6th to 9th in Hershey. So this fundraiser was to help support those students. So if those students volunteered to help with the sale, then they get to split the proceeds in order to help them go to states. The Manilow Music Project Teacher Award, which we were talking about, this is North Hills' own. Len Lovell is a finalist in this award. He could win up to $10,000 to benefit our music department. It is decided solely based on the online votes, so you have to set a reminder and vote daily through April 3rd, and then the link can be found below. Our final reminder for the musical, so it's Alice by Heart. It's in the North Hills High School auditorium. The show dates start on March 21st, then the 22nd, 27th, 28th, and 29th, all at 7:30, and then there's a matinee on March 23rd at 1:30. The tickets are on sale now below. Adults are 12, and then students and seniors are both seven. Prom reminder, this is the junior and senior prom held on Saturday, March 10th, from 6 to 10 at Aquashire Stadium. The tickets are on sale from the 7th to the 29th of April, and complete details can be found on the activities and event site. So just recap, any tickets for Kicking It For Kids prom or, and all be found online. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you both very much. Next, I will move on with a request for the board to approve the minutes of the February 6th, 2025 committee meeting with action and the February 20th, 25 legislative meeting, which are attached. I will move that the board approve the minutes for February 6th, 2025, and February 20th, 25. Is there a second?
D. Spade, I'll second that.
Thank you, Mrs. Spade. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye opposed? Motion carries. We have one person signed up for public comment this evening, so I will read our participation policy first. The board recognizes the value to school governance of public comment on educational issues and the importance of involving members of the public in board meetings. The board also recognizes its responsibility for proper governance of the district and the need to conduct its business in an orderly and efficient manner. We would like to invite any resident taxpayer or employee of the North Hills School District who wishes to address the board to come forward at this time. It is our policy to strongly encourage such public participation in as much as it provides the board with an important source of ideas as well as informs us of many concerns in the district. The board has limited public comment by a participant to five minutes in duration, and no participant may speak more than once per meeting on the same topics. Commenters may not cede their time to other individuals in an attempt to extend one or more commenter's allotted time. Tonight's meeting is being recorded and broadcast live on the North Hills School District's YouTube page. Images may also be posted on district social media. Mr. Spinelli?
Just wanted to thank the presenters from last week. Dr. Williams, really good explanation on the pilots and the programs, and Mrs. Hittlin with her literary arcs presentation, especially in light of the NAEP, Nation's Report card with a third of eighth graders that can't even read at grade level. That's pretty sad, but fortunately, that's not a problem here. It was great information there, and of course, Mr. Lovell, the music programs second to none. That's the standard of excellence, and we just saw a little bit of it earlier. So I wanted to thank all those individuals because it was helpful, informative, and what we really need to see, some evidence of positive impact and influence that we're having. The February one that Dr. Williams presented, I wasn't able to attend it at Beatty, mentioned the, I thought outstanding PSSA results and performances. Thankfully, we can thank the teachers more than anything else or anyone else, some of the parents and the students, but mostly the classroom teachers, because we're 15, 20 points ahead of, or more, ahead of Pennsylvania. And that's as it should be, because Pennsylvania's pretty average, 24, 25, 26. It's an average state, not good, not bad, but it's a C, a solid C. And we're North Hills, we're not average, okay? We should be where we are there, B-plus, A-minus level. And that's, again, testament to the classroom teachers, I think, more than anything else. The keystones, however, I don't know what the disconnect is, because we've got the same three core subjects, English, math, and science. So I appreciate Dr. Williams reaching out to some of us parents. We're going to set up calls and maybe offer some advice for the math task force, because there's no reason for that. The algebra was really pitifully low. Biology was, the literature at least, that was above. But like I said, we're not average, and we're certainly not below average. So we need to really focus on the keystones, because far from making our kids' numbers, it's not about making them numbers. Standardized testing is the gold standard. That's how we measure. That's proof, that's evidence. Dr. Barkovich gave a nice presentation last night at the high school library about the college application process emphasizing the importance of the ACT, the ASVAB, the SATs, and other things involved. So I know that we can get this done, because testing isn't going away. That's part of life. Now's the time to learn how to test and test well, because any decent job or career is going to be testing involved. Could be licensing, could be certification. So now is when they need to learn it. And I think with the teaching staff we have, and if we get enough input from the right parents and others, we should be able to turn those keystones around as well to match the PSSA results, because that's the best proof and evidence that we've got, and I think we're able to do that. So I wanted to thank all those people involved, and I look forward to contacting Dr. Williams and setting up a phone appointment on that, and hopefully we can get those keystones up to the PSSA levels, because we're North Hills. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Little, I'll hand it over to you to introduce our next presenters.
All right, thank you, Madam President. This evening, under Athletics and Activities, we have a presentation from our athletic director, Mr. Pat Weber, and our activities coordinator, Ms. Shelley Zimberro.
Thanks, Mr. Little. I just wanted to take a little bit of time tonight to recap our winter sports and look ahead to spring. Our basketball teams, they both, coincidentally, finished fifth in their section. The boys qualified for the playoffs, and they lost in the first round at Butler. We did have Zach Polero achieve 1,000 points for his career, so that was a great milestone for him. He also was named the Big 56 Section Player of the Year by the section coaches, and he was on... of, or more, ahead of Pennsylvania. And that's as it should be, because Pennsylvania's pretty average, 24, 25, 26. It's an average state, not good, not bad, but it's a C, a solid C. And we're North Hills. We're not average. Okay? We should be where we are there, B+ A- level. And that's, again, testament to the classroom teachers, I think, more than anything else. The keystones, however, I don't know what the disconnect is, because we've got the same three core subjects, English, math, and science. So, I appreciate Dr. Williams reaching out to some of us parents. We're going to set up calls and maybe offer some advice for the math task force, because there's no reason for that. The algebra was really pitifully low. Biology was, the literature at least, that was above. But like I said, we're not average, and we're certainly not below average. So, we need to really focus on the keystones, because far from making our kids' numbers, it's not about making them numbers. Standardized testing is the gold standard. That's how we measure. That's proof. That's evidence. Dr. Barkovich gave a nice presentation last night at the high school library about the college application process emphasizing the importance of the ACT, the ASVAB, the SATs, and other things involved. So, I know that we can get this done, because testing isn't going away. That's part of life. Now's the time to learn how to test and test well, because any decent job or career is going to be testing involved. Could be licensing, could be certification. So, now is when they need to learn it. And I think with the teaching staff we have, and if we get enough input from the right parents and others, we should be able to turn those keystones around as well to match the PSSA results, because that's the best proof and evidence that we've got. And I think we're able to do that. So, I wanted to thank all those people involved, and I look forward to contacting Dr. Williams and setting up a phone appointment on that, and hopefully, we can get those keystones up to the PSSA levels, because we're North Hills. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Little, I'll hand it over to you to introduce our next presenters.
All right. Thank you, Madam President. This evening, under Athletics and Activities, we have a presentation from our athletic director, Mr. Pat Weber, and our activities coordinator, Ms. Shelley Zimmerman.
Thanks, Mr. Little. I just wanted to take a little bit of time tonight to recap our winter sports and look ahead to spring. Our basketball teams, they both, coincidentally, finished fifth in their section. The boys qualified for the playoffs, and they lost in the first round at Butler. We did have Zach Polero achieve 1,000 points for his career, so that was a great milestone for him. He also was named the Big 56 Section Player of the Year by the section coaches, and he was honored today at the Big 56 banquet. On the girls' side, Gia Minton and Zoe Devlin both received second-team honors for the Big 56. So, the future is bright. I know Gia's a senior, but Zoe had a great year, and it showed with the coaches noticing that. Moving on to indoor track and field, I know this is the first year sort of being sanctioned, if you will. It was very successful. We had a lot of athletes that competed at various meets at Youngstown State and Edinburgh. We earned five total medals between relays and individuals at the TSTCA Championship Meet. Kayden Leitner and Gama Mogayar advanced to the Pennsylvania Track and Field Coaches Association Championship, where Kayden placed fifth in the state in the 800. Gama ran the 60-meter hurdles, and he placed 17th. Our swimmers and divers, they had a successful season. We had two divers that qualified for the Whipple Championships, and Noah Wolf found himself on the medal stand at 7th. And we had 15 swimmers that participated in the WPIL Individual Championships. We had three relay teams that earned top-10 finishes, and Amanda Bliss found her way on the medal stand with an eighth-place finish in the 100 breaststroke. Amanda was named an alternate for the PI double-A meet, but there were four others that had to scratch, and unfortunately, she didn't qualify. Wrestling, a great season for them, team-wise and individual. The team, they were 3A, Section 6 Champions, the first ever in North Hills' history. They qualified for the playoffs, and they were victorious against Penn Trafford, moved on to the next round, and fell short against Thomas Jefferson, who made it into the finals for the team. On the individual side, we had nine wrestlers who qualified for the Whipple Championships. Out of that, two that are pictured there, Brady Rowley and Carter Morve, they advanced to the PI double-A Regional, which is one step before Hershey, but they were eliminated there. But a lot to show for that. Brady was the Northern Section Champion, and to get to the Regional, he was 7th place in the WPIL. And Carter, he was 2nd place in the Northern Section and got a bronze medal at the WPIL Individual Championship. So, both of those guys are back with a lot more, and they're looking to build on that. Looking ahead to spring, I know the student reps talked a little bit about the spring already. We've been blessed with weather. I don't even want to say it. March 3rd was the first date for official practices. Tomorrow is the first date for contests, so a lot of teams will be starting their official regular season. The multipurpose turf field has seen a ton of use, little odds and ends that we are picking up on and fixing as we go. But it was great to move the pep rally out there and get the lights, and the whole atmosphere was really, really good. So, it was a glimpse into what the spring will look like out there. And last is just best of luck to all those spring sports student athletes that are competing for us, I guess, for a short two months, if you will. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure. I just want to quick shout out also, ice hockey did, I'm sorry, you know, I gotta say, it doesn't usually happen, so I am proud of the ice hockey team, because they made it, pardon?
Quarterfinals.
Yes, quarterfinals. And it doesn't usually happen. They had a great run, and it was good to see this year. So, you know, can't help it. I'm a mom, senior mom, so I'll save the tears. And we see them all with their bleached hair. Hello, everyone. I'm Shelley Zimmerman. I'm the activities coordinator for the district. We have already had a great year so far with all of our activities and events, and we have even more to come in the next few months. So, I do have some of the events I'm going to be talking about. Our student reps did such an awesome job on saying some of the things I have too, but we will start, and I'll say them again. Did I just shut it off? There we go. Thank you. Our Hilltop Heroes Club is hosting a video tournament tomorrow at the high school, right after school. Next week, our bands and chorus kick off the spring concerts, beginning with the elementary band concerts. Westview, High Cliff, and 6th Grade Concert is on May 18th, followed by High Cliff and McIntyre on March 19th. Our Drama Club presents the high school musical Alice by Heart for the next two weekends. As mentioned before, it's March 21st, 22nd, 23rd, and also March 27th, 28th, and 29th. All ticket information can be found on our district website. The Elementary Orchestra Spring Concert is on April 3rd, and our Children's Choir Concert is on April 7th. Our FBLA students took home top honors at the regional competition of the Future Business Leaders of America and qualified to participate and compete at the Pennsylvania FBLA State Leadership Conference and Competition, held in Hershey, PA. And that, they leave on April 6th and come back on the 9th. Good luck to everyone. Our middle school band has their concert on April 8th. And our North Hills Wind Ensemble has been invited to perform in a joint concert with the University of Michigan Concert Band in their Hill Auditorium on April 16th. The University of Michigan Concert Band are among the finest in the world, and it is an incredible invitation to join them on their stage. The Wind Ensemble will head to Michigan on April 15th and return on the 17th. Congratulations to all. Our high school Drama Club is having their annual Drama Club Showcase and Thesbian Society induction on April 25th. And as the girls mentioned before, save the date, April 26th is our new Kicking It For Kids event from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. It's our new community event that will be held on the new hilltop field, featuring our kickball game for all ages and abilities. Come join the fun for a great day of kickball, inflatables, music, food, and touch a truck. We would love to see you all there. If you know anyone who would like to set up an interactive booth or some kind of game or something to do that day, please let us know. After the community event, the color run and after-party for high school students for a $10 entry fee. High school students will be given a T-shirt and will run two laps around the hilltop campus and be sprayed with color along the way. Once the race is over, they will be able to enjoy a dance party on the field with all the inflatables to enjoy as well. Bless you. Will they be sliming the principals again this year? We have not reached out to them yet, but... Because I have a volunteer, I mean, an administrator right here. Doctor Manorino, would you like to be slimed? He really enjoyed that. We can make that happen. There you go. Thank you. Anytime. Our annual Arts Alive event will be held at the high school on May 2nd. The Guitar Ensemble Concert is on May 6th, and our Orchestra Senior Farewell Concert is May 7th. Our SAD Club is presenting their annual Mock Crash for our senior class on May 9th, followed by our prom on Saturday, May 10th, at Aquashire Stadium. Ticket sales begin, I thought it was April 3rd. We had April 7th on the last one, but we'll say April 3rd through the 29th. But all outside guest tickets must be purchased by April 23rd. So, if you're bringing in outside guests, you have to make sure your guest ticket is purchased by April 23rd. You can see all of the events and information for our prom will be on the activities website on the district website. Our middle school choir concert will be held on May 13th, followed by our high school choir concert on May 14th. We also have a few more senior farewell concerts for the band. We have, our Jazz Band Concert is on May 1st, and our Concert Band is on May 22nd. Our district's, North Hills School District, Kennywood Day is May 24th. Tickets are $31.99 per ticket if purchased before May 10th. After May 10th, the ticket price goes up to $35.99 beginning May 11th, so make sure you get your tickets early. All tickets must be purchased online at kennywood.com/schools, but all the information will be on our district We also have some May Class of 2025 dates to add to your calendar. Senior Declaration Day and Cap and Gown Pickup will be held in the cafeteria during all lunches on May 2nd. We also have our Senior Clapout and Senior Breakfast on May 27th, and we will end the school year with our Class of 2025 commencement on May 30th. As you can see, we have a busy three months ahead of us, and we're looking forward to a great end of the school year. Please check out the Activities page on our district website for all ticket and event information for the remainder part of the year. And please, save the date for April 26th, Kicking It For Kids. We all would like you to come, enjoy your family, have fun, and see everybody up here on the hilltop. Thank you. Thank you, Shelley. And thank you, Pat. Okay, the next group of items we will vote on as a consent, because we discussed them last week. So, the superintendent recommends and I so move that the board approve Consent Items 1 through 13. Thank you, Mrs. Spade. Any discussion on any items? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
I'm voting yes on all items, but I'm going to, again, abstain from general fund bill, check number 7779 and 77944.
Thank you. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Mrs. Spade, you're up with personnel?
Thank you. Personnel and legal items are discussed in executive session. The superintendent recommends and I so move that the board approve Items 1 through 3.
Is there a second?
Mike Santucci, I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Santucci. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Mrs. Stevens, do you have anything under legislative this evening?
Yes, just a couple of updates. During my last report, I enumerated the proposed changes from the Shapiro Administration on State Education Funding. Since then, the State Department of Education officials have appeared before both the PA, House, and Senate for the Budgetarian Appropriations Committees. Among the items discussed most intensely in those meetings were the federal funding impacts on state education budgets and the $1.6 billion in federal funding that the state receives for K-12 education, flat rates for cyber schools, particularly following PA Auditor General Tim DeFor's call for reform after the audit of several cyber school institutions, and adequacy gap funding that does affect North Hills. Right now, we have an identified gap of over $2 million. Last year, received $244,000, and we are slated to receive in the current budget another $244,000. At the federal level, the administration cut USDA funding for the local Food for Schools Program for 2025. This is a $660 million program that did fund, in part, the Pennsylvania Farm to Schools Initiative, which was a cooperative between districts and farms to provide local seasonal produce to students across the state.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Rennebeck, do you have anything additional on Beatty this evening? Okay. I would just like to announce that there will be a public budget meeting immediately following the adjournment of this board meeting. And the next meeting of our board is scheduled for Thursday, April 3rd, 2025, right here in the North Hills Middle School LGI Room at 6:15 p.m. I will move to adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody.